I call the meeting to order. We can stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. At this point, we will have our public hearing on our 2019-20 school year budget. At that point, after the presentation, anyone in the audience is welcome to ask questions. With that, Mrs. Zizinski?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. The purpose of our budget hearing is to provide a summary of the proposed budget for the 1920 school year that we will be putting forth to our voters on vote day at the end of May. And this summary snapshot reflects the work that has taken place over the last six months or so from the board, the administration, with teacher input, to make sure that the budget that we're proposing supports district initiatives, student achievement, and instruction for all of our students. So, we will start by reviewing the proposed budget. There will be several components to it. We're required to share these numbers in multiple formats. We share them in a variety of ways, with our newsletter, our website, our property tax report card. And we'll go through some of those. We'll also review our projected property tax rate, which is based on estimated information, what a contingency budget would look like and what that entails, and then the details of our budget vote and board member election. After that, we'll be able to take any questions that anyone might have. So, to begin, we always reflect on our Amherst mission. This mission guides all of the decisions that we make every day throughout the year, not only during budget development, but also in our day-to-day interactions with our staff and students, to prepare our students to excel in a dynamic world through development of their abilities to reason, solve problems, apply knowledge, communicate, and collaborate effectively. And when we leave that message at the forefront, or when we leave our mission statement at the forefront of our minds when we're making these decisions, it helps guide all of our decisions. It helps guide the process. And the result is a budget that can support the initiatives that our students and staff need. Okay. So, the proposed budget. So, we'll go over the summary of the details of the budget that we've developed over the past few months. So, this is a summary. And then, more detailed information is available to the public through our website for the individual budget presentations that started back in December. So, our property tax levy is a tax cap compliant increase of 3%, which uses the growth factor of 1.0021, which reflects the growth that's in our town, CPI of 2%, which is the maximum amount allowed under the tax cap, and our allowable exclusions of $883,000. Exclusions are the difference between our debt service payments and the state aid that we receive to offset those. And the reason that's an exclusion is because those dollars were already authorized by our voters through project votes. So, we're allowed to add those on top of our tax levy increase. Our state aid is based on the adopted New York State budget with the ones that were released at the beginning of April. And we increased those numbers by $50,000 in BOSI's aid for a planned year-end project that we are hoping to put forth the end of May, early June, to enhance and replace our technology throughout the district. Miscellaneous revenues are expected to remain stable. Some of the areas are decreasing, but they're offset by increases in other areas. Pilot payments, Erie County sales tax revenue are both expected to stay somewhat stable. Our community education revenues are decreasing as our special ed program is now with another vendor. But our interest earnings increased dramatically with the increase in rates in our new investment plans. And then, our Medicaid reimbursements are somewhat similar. Our transfers are proposed $60,000 from our tax cert, which is offset by an expenditure line that equals that, and $200,000 from our employee benefits approved liability reserve. And this $260,000 is the same allocation that we used in the current year. Unappropriated fund balance is used to offset our contingency line for unplanned expenditures in health insurance of $500,000. Again, that's offset by an expenditure line. And the $420,000 was used to close our remaining projected gap between our revenues and our expenditures. So, in total, unappropriated fund balance and transfers is $1.18 million, which is $60,000 less than our current allocation this year of $1.24 million. So, overall, our proposed budget is increasing by about $1.6 million or 2.72%. $58.5 million in the current year to $60,143 in 1920. It includes the 3% property tax levy increase, about $600,000 of an increase in state aid, which is just under 4%. Pilot, sales tax, our miscellaneous revenues that we discussed a few minutes ago, and then our transfers and appropriated fund balance. On the expenditure side, our personnel is projected to increase about 2.36%. And that's due to our contractual obligations. We did have some changes in there with a few staff reductions based on enrollment needs. We had some retirements and resignations. And then, we added some extracurricular stipends at the elementary school. Our benefits are another category that are staying somewhat stable as a few areas are decreasing, but they're being offset by another area that's increasing. ERS and TRS rates are projected to decrease, but health insurance is going up about 3%, which is $200,000. And those together offset to leave our benefits somewhat flat. General support is showing an increase of about 3%. And we increased our utility codes. And we added $35,000 for state aid hardware for security cameras. And that is something that is able to be reimbursed the following year. So, that's a separate budget code. We've made those purchases in prior years, but we didn't have the funds separated specifically for them. So, we're adding that in this year so that we don't need to depend on year-end surpluses in order to make that purchase. We will continue the capital outlay project that we have in our budget annually of $100,000. And we'll continue our $500,000 contingency line, which again is to help offset any increases in health insurance. On the instruction side, we're increasing just under 6%. We added our SRO this year, so we're budgeting for that next year, although we did offset much of that through reductions in other lines. And then, we made an adjustment to our special education budget based on our student needs. So, that was about $60,000, $30,000 in personnel, and about $30,000 in contract services. And then, we increased our software subscriptions to maintain our current subscriptions. And those costs are based on a per pupil cost and the number of students we have. So, that was going up about $10,000. BOSI's is projected to increase about 3%, but again, that will result in an increase in aid the following year. Transportation is increasing about 2%. 1.5 of that is our contractual increase, which we are in the middle, it'll be the third year of our three-year contract. And we added just under $10,000 to provide after-school buses for our elementary schools two days a week in each building to help support their extracurriculars. Debt service is increasing $500,000. And much of that is due to the payments of our current capital project. And that's a little bit less than what we had originally anticipated because our borrowing rate came in very well this year. So, our interest rate was very low. So, we had a little bit lower of a payment than we had originally projected. Great news. Changes in salary are based on a couple factors. We did have retirements, which resulted in salary breakage of $170,000. We had some staffing changes. We had four resignations, 3.2 of which will be hired, rehired. We had a reduction of a .2 FTE of a general education teacher. That's a reduction to our budget, but not a personnel reduction because that's a full-time employee who had an extra assignment. So, the extra assignment is what is being reduced. So, it won't affect full-time employment. We had a part-time LPN at one of our private schools that will not be needed next year. And on the addition side, we added stipends for the elementary extracurriculars, advisor stipends for our middle school web program, and a department chair stipend that will support across the district. Special education changes we talked about. It's a reduction of $60,000, which was a half-time teacher and $30,000, about $30,000 in contract services. And then, we reduced our buildings and grounds department by $10,000, which was $5,000 in contract services and $5,000 in materials and supplies. And that was based on current year expenditures. And it was an area that we thought we would be able to absorb that decrease for next year. So, our proposed expenditure budget shows, again, a $1.6 million increase or a 2.72% increase in spending. Just over 2% is in personnel, which was about $600,000. Benefits stayed relatively flat. Again, the decrease in the rates and the increase in health insurance. The other changes are somewhat small. Instruction, BOSI's was 3%. Transportation was contractual debt service. And then, you see the contingency line, which remains the same from year to year, is only used if needed based on unexpected high-cost claims through our health insurance. Two of the formats that school districts are required to divide their budget into when proposing the budget to the voters is the tripartite budget and the component budget. The tripartite budget takes the whole budget and divides it into three portions: the administrative portion, the capital portion, and the program portion. So, comparing 1819 to 1920, we had just very small change in administrative increases, 0.12%. About 7.8% increase in capital. And much of that is due to our debt service payment that's increasing. And then, a 2% increase in our program. What we want to make sure we keep a close eye on is the percent of budget for each of the categories. So, our administrative portion is 10% of our overall budget. Our capital, which is our facilities, and debt service is less than 15%, which leaves 75% of our overall budget solely focusing on student instruction and student supports. The second part of the format that we're required to share is the component budget, which further divides the budget into five areas: general support, instruction, transportation, employee benefits, and debt and transfers. All of the information is the same. It's just divided into different categories. Our debt and transfers is increasing $500,000. And that's the debt service payment. Employee benefits is staying somewhat flat. Transportation is increasing $77,000. That's based on the $9,600 we added for the after-school buses and our contractual increases. Instruction is going up $900,000. And general support, $143,000. Part of our budget includes a capital outlay project. So, we want to make sure that we share with our voters every year what we're planning to spend that money on. And that is a separate line item in our budget of $100,000. It is approved by the voters as all capital work is required to do as part of the budget. But because of the $100,000 limit, we're not required to get a separate approval from the voters. It still receives building aid the following year. The difference between an outlay project and a large capital project is capital project aid is amortized over 15 years. And outlay aid is received the following year. Next year, our proposal is to replace the emergency generator here at the middle school. It has well surpassed its useful life. It is functioning, but we've put some money into repairs over the last year or two. And the parts are becoming more difficult to find when it doesn't need to be repaired. And then, our past projects in the last few years include the middle school district office vestibule, which will be completed this summer or early this fall. And then, the elevators at both elementary schools, some work at the high school vestibule, and then, the entry ramp downstairs at the district office entrance. So, overall, our budget is increasing $1.6 million from $58.5 million to just over $60 million, $60,143,000. Our projected budgets for the following two years do show budget gaps, but those are very conservative numbers. We're assuming little increases in state aid and slightly higher increases in expenditures. But it is important to note that our expenditures tend to outweigh, outpace our revenues, which is why it's so important for our advocacy efforts to continue with the state so that our state aid and our foundation aid can increase sufficiently to support our budget increases so we can maintain our programming and all of the initiatives and activities we have available for our students. Expenditures per pupil between Amherst, a similar district, and districts across New York State. Amherst is $19,887,000 per student. A district in New York State that's similar to us, similar in size, enrollment, socioeconomic status, is $22,000. And then, average across all districts in New York State is 24. So, we're certainly on the right side of that. And we will work to maintain that. So, our projected property tax rate. Our current year rate, 1819, was 19.597772 per thousand of assessed value. So, we used an estimated assessment from the town that was provided by the town of $1.8 billion, which was $3 million of a decrease in assessed value for the town of Amherst. And using our proposed tax levy limit, it gives us a tax rate per thousand of $20.22, which is a 62, 63 cent per thousand increase in the tax rate, or 3.19% increase. The reason that's a little different than our levy increase is because the assessment value decreased. So, that's what changes that percentage so that it's not exact. Again, those are just estimates. And we'll receive the final assessed value from the town at the end of July, early August. And that's when we will determine our final rates and have them adopted. So, a contingency budget. In the event that our budget, proposed in May, does not pass, we have the option to move forward with a revote in June, or the board has the option to adopt a contingent budget. If the board chose to revote in June and again, it didn't pass, then we have no choice but to adopt a contingent budget. In the event a contingent budget is adopted, there are restrictions on our spending. The tax levy cannot be increased over the prior year at all. It has to be a 0% increase. Community members and organizations are not permitted to use our facilities or our grounds without paying the full operating and usage costs. So, not only would we need to pay maintenance and prep, but electric to turn on the light and portion of heating. And it's not anything that we would ever want to be forced to do with our community. No new equipment may be purchased. So, any equipment lines that we have in the budget would need to be wiped out because we're not allowed to purchase any new equipment under a contingent budget. No nonessential maintenance may be performed, whether it's painting or replacing ceiling tiles. If it wasn't an emergency situation, we're not allowed to spend money to do it. And then, no non-unionized employees would be able to have any salary increases. So, overall, this would be a contingent budget would be $59,600,000, which is still an increase of just over $1 million of our current year, which is 1.78%. But it would be $546,000 less than what our proposed budget is. So, we would have all of those restrictions in place. And we would only be saving about $546,000. Budget vote and board member election. So, on our vote day, we will ask our voters to approve proposition number one, which is the budget of $60,143,000 with a 3.01% tax cap increase, which is compliant, and vote on two board of education seats, of which we have two candidates: Ms. Lori Goldhawk and Mr. Don Rickveeblow. More information about our candidates can be found in our newsletter, which is hot off the presses, I believe. I think I saw a copy today. And will be mailed to every property owner and homeowner in the district in the next few days. Any questions?
Any questions? Can you just help me understand about community education? I know you said you went to a different vendor, but just explain for somebody, just a person in the community, what is community education for the district? And why is it being cut by 76%? Like, what is that?
Sure. We, in prior years, we ran our own after-school program. And this year, we eliminated that. But we made that decision after the current year budget had been adopted. So, those funds won't be spent this year. But that includes the salaries and the expenses to run the after-school program for the before and after-school program at both Windy Hill and Smallwood. So, now, that is housed with Just for Kids, or JFK. So, we don't have those expenses and we don't have those revenues. So, it cut out of both sides. So, the remaining funds that are in community education lines for revenues are revenues that we receive from students who participate in our actual community education programs, whether it's during the school year for after-school activities or our summer programs.
I don't want to, like, cut anybody else off. Can I have a couple more? Is increases in utility codes just increases in utility costs?
Correct. Telephone, water, electric, gas.
Costs are costs.
Yes.
On the next one, on the expenditures, and it says, like, the contingency of $500,000 that you said that is in there. I mean...
I can stick to that one. So...
I didn't ask my question yet.
Oh, well.
You're mind reader. I just wanted to know, like, is it... I mean, you put it in there. I know why it's there.
Okay.
But is it, I mean, is it being... You said it's there for any unforeseen thing, cost, particularly for, you said, mentioned healthcare cost. So, is it being utilized so far this year? Or no, we haven't had to?
No.
So, as far as that goes, that's been pretty good?
And even in the event when we overspend our health insurance budget, our goal is to still not spend that and transfer from other lines that there may be funds available. But in the event that we have a high-cost claimant and those expenses are more than we have available in other lines, we wanted to make sure that we had that contingency available because it's against the law for any school district to overspend their budget. And being self-insured, we run that risk every year. We do have stop-loss insurance. But if you have enough people hitting that expenditure, even though you may be getting some of it back in revenue, we still need to make sure that we have the budget to support the overall expenditures.
Which, I was actually, added it prior to Laura, but she seems very well versed on why we added it. So, yeah, there was a time when our budget came within $5,000 of the spending limit, which in this budget is $60,143. And it was because of unforeseen healthcare costs. And, you know, as we sit here in May of 2019, we have no idea what's going to happen with people's health and well-being in a year from now. So, we gave ourselves a little wiggle room there, but offset it on the revenue side with appropriation from fund balance to make sure it didn't hit the taxpayers.
And I have one more question to say. Like, in the, on the component budget chart, in the, I mean, generally, employee benefits, it seems like it usually trends up. So, why do you think there is this, you know, you said it relatively flat, the decrease of $35,000. you said relatively flat, the decrease of thirty-five thousand, where did that, is that...
The TRS rate in the current year is ten-point-six-three percent, and next year it's projected at eight-point-eight-six. So one percent of a change, either up or down, is just over two-hundred thousand dollars. So with the TRS rate dropping a little over a percent, even though health insurance is increasing, they kind of offset each other. We just need to be really careful that in future years, if the TRS rate starts to climb again, it could really affect our budget. Any other questions? So we respectfully ask and encourage all of our taxpayers and homeowners, please join us on May twenty-first, Tuesday, May twenty-first, in the High School South Gymnasium to vote from seven a.m. to nine p.m. You don't have to come for the whole time, we'll be there the whole time, you can just come stop in and vote. It is two questions that we will ask you to answer. One is the total budget amount of sixty million one hundred and forty-three thousand, and two seats for the Board of Education where two candidates are running. If you're so inclined, you can fill out the survey. And if you're so inclined, you can fill out the exit survey.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Griesmer.
Thank you very much.
With that, I will close the budget hearing and start our regular meeting. We had no visitors wishing to speak. Do we have any reports of boards and committees?
Yeah, we went, there was a policy committee meeting. It's actually short and sweet, there were just two policies that were renewed. We added an additional meeting just because there were so many and they're just trying to keep on top of all the policies that need to be approved. There were just two, there was one, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, and other safety-sensitive employees, but our, our bus, our school bus drivers are already, first students are already doing that, so we were, didn't really have to make any changes there. And then they have registration and professional development, it was just about teachers are getting additional education that is required. It just kind of outlined some of the ways that they had to report it and just a bit of change there. But they were short and sweet, and that was the meeting.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, any other updates? All right, then we'll jump right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Griesmer, Mr. Crombie, and representatives from the middle school to provide us with their strategic plan update for the current year. Welcome.
Thank you.
Where'd it go? Where was it? Want to help Mrs. Distodi maybe?
Yep.
That's not it.
It's tapped.
We got it, we got it, we got it. I'll just let you take control.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight for our annual State of the Middle School address, if you will, tied to our strategic plan. It's always, it's always exciting to come and visit you toward the end of the year and update you on our progress that we first shared with you in the beginning of the year. And as you can see by tonight's agenda, should show momentarily.
Use my glasses here.
I believe it's the arrow.
Right there. All right.
There we go. As you can see by, yeah, Mr. Crombie just...
I've got new eyes, so my apologies. My eyes are getting adjusted to the old man forty-two glasses here again.
So as you can see by our agenda, we have six tasks to highlight for you tonight, four of which come from our district's Priority Number One, Learning and Achievement. We'll go through them in order, and then we'll segue to Priority Number Two, Student Life, and share one task with you, and then end the evening's presentation in Priority Three, Amherst Pride. So moving right into Priority One, Learning and Achievement, the task we are going to talk about here is part of the College and Career Readiness Initiative. And you all know that there is a great emphasis in both middle and high schools on college and career readiness. And there are many suggestions of what a school and a staff can do to increase it. And what we thought as a strategic planning committee, much like we see in the district plans strewn throughout for everyone to think about, is before we, before we implement new ideas in the way of college and career readiness, it's best to first take stock of what is exactly taking place in each classroom and where our teachers feel there might be a deficit versus where there may be a surplus of those skills being talked about. And so we have a College and Career Readiness Subcommittee. We have, I think, six subcommittees running this year tied to the strategic plan, and there's a whole lot of work involved in each one. So Mr. Crombie and I are very fortunate that we have had a handful of teacher leaders step up to run those subcommittees, and one of the biggest demonstrations of that this year has been in this Subcommittee's realm, and I want to make particular mention of Mrs. Kelly Rup in the back there, who with her colleague in career and life, Mr. Terry Nelson, have been co-chairing that committee and doing the lion's share of the oversight. And I'm very grateful I get to kind of go and just be, just be a member of the group, which is, which is fun for me to see, to sit, to sit in that chair as part of Amherst Middle School. So thank you again, Kelly, and to Terry, who's not here for the hard work they've done. And one of the first things we came up with in this Subcommittee was to harness the power of Google and issue a survey to our faculty about their own audit, either in their own classroom or with their content partners or grade-level partners. And we did one and got, got some particular information, and then we launched one even in greater detail, and I gave you a snapshot of it here, and I just want to show you the difference. We asked a fairly simple question in the beginning about collaboration and social and personal skills. Are you using them, right? But we don't leave it at that. The next one is the big one, because if you answered yes, you don't get to move on, you got to tell us where. Where, where are you doing that? And it's really to, to help you, as the teacher, figure out where focus should lie, if that, if that makes sense. So our faculty has been very gracious in responding to our requests, because it does take some time. This, this sort of, this sort of survey is not a quick one, but we, we ask that they take about a month to work on it and get it back to us, and we've been aggregating that data now. In fact, there was a meeting this morning for this Subcommittee to keep, keep going with this, and we're excited to see where that lands so that in next school year, we can continue with this focus. Okay. Staying in the college and career readiness realm, we have another task that I am, am very proud of, frankly, because this task to continue refining our sixth-grade ELA curriculum and adjusting to block structure is one that has been a part of our, our lives at Amherst Middle School now for, for over two years. And I am thrilled to say, I think through quite a few twists and turns and collaboration, we, we have our model ready to go. And it is only fitting that I, that I ask Dr. Shanahan to join us for this portion of the presentation, because she has been involved with this from the ground level before she was our Dr. Shanahan, when she was, when she was consulting with the district. And I know she shares my enthusiasm for where we've landed.
You got your eyes on, I'm going to let you click for me, because I'm not moving you while you get that all set up and I'll just stand up here for a minute. So as John mentioned, I started working the sixth grade about a year and a half ago, but it sounds like two years, but it was probably about four to five meetings a year, just to, to set the tone. We really looked at what they were currently doing, what the standards were asking for, and the rigor of the curriculum, and there were some determinations made at that time that we wanted to reconfigure that block structure. At that point, they were very split, which was, which was very typical, so it's not atypical, to be more of a reading block and a writing block, but really they integrated processes and they should be put together more. And so one of our goals was to do two, well, there's multiple things, but we restructured their block, so there is forty minutes around novel study and forty minutes that's really around English Language Arts literacy skills and strategies. I'm going to break that down for you in just a second, starting over here. One of the things that was going on in the switch-in instruction was really focusing on reading excerpts that are on a pretty high level and then being able to analyze those, interpret those, and respond to those. If you stay with reading novels in your English Language Arts class, you can't get to enough excerpts to do the literacy skills and strategies that you need to be college and career-ready. So what we ended up doing was, we took the English Language Arts block, and it's really focused on reading these excerpts from really good literature, but you could target what the readings were to work on the skills or strategies in a more pointed way. You didn't have to get through six chapters to hit the skill or strategy. So in that one forty-minute block, they work on reading, writing, speaking, listening with this high-level text and responding with support from the teacher. We did this, they started at first writing and thinking on their own about it, and one of my observations was they were spending a lot of time collecting materials, and that gets exhausting, because now you got to figure out how you're going to teach it, right? So we went to a resource that gave us high-level tech, excerpts from texts that were really good pieces of literature. So they're still getting exposed to that good literature, but just pieces of it, and then they are asked to do certain things with these texts that develop their literacy skills and strategies. There's also a full technology, technological platform with this, so they can do a hybrid. They can do all paper or pencil, they can go into a hybrid, some tech and paper pencil, if they want to, or they could go fully online with the program. Right now, they're doing a little bit of a hybrid, and they're piloting. So that's forty minutes of the block, all reading and writing together, though, not separated. Then we went to novel studies. One of the things that happens that we all know, if you have middle school children or high school children, there's a real dip in motivation to read as an adolescent, because your world becomes much bigger, right? Your social becomes very important, some of the other activities you're involved in become important. Closing up with a book sometimes, well, research says it decreases at this time. But one of the ways we can increase it, and it is one of our, in our standards, to develop lifelong love of reading, right? So that's another standard we're hitting as well, is we have a novel study, but it's not just novel, it's reading and responding, which hits our standards there as well with reading and writing and discussion. Through discussion of text, we increase our thinking around it if we're prompting and have questions to ask that are on higher level. So there's still all this critical thinking going on, but it's with more a whole, connected text. In this, we'll be fully launched with the second forty minutes, with how they're going to grade this and all of that cohesive across the grade level for next year, because we're piloting now and developing. But here, they will read novels, respond to novels, talk about novels, and write, you know, respond to them, you know, whatever prompts or cues. This will also allow differentiation so that we can pick all different levels of text around particular themes or genres. So if you have students that are reading a super-high level, they'll have the chance to exceed any of the grade-level stuff at that time. If you have kids that were trying to pull up, they will, they will have that opportunity as well. One way that's indisputable to increase reading achievement is through getting your eyes on a text. You have to read to be a better reader, you have to write to be a better writer. So in this eighty-minute block, it's divided up kind of into two, and one is this intensive grade level on skills and strategy development. What the teachers are doing is bringing some of these skills and strategies into this differentiated block of time, so it doesn't just flip to something that's unrelated. Now, if I'm struggling to do this with a grade-level text, or I can do this on an above-level text, I'm going to give you a more complex text to do that strategy with. It's going to be harder. Just because I can do it on grade level doesn't mean when I pump up the level of text, I can still do it. So this is where the teachers will be able to differentiate. In with this, our other goal was to have formative assessment and performance tasks around writing. So this will be integrated in next year with the performance assessments, and we'll be able to follow the kids, the students' skill and strategy development as writers and interpreters of text. So that is, that is what the structure looks like right now. And if you want to click to the next one, this is a long quote, I know it's long in there, and I, it's an important quote, so we gave you the full quote to read, I underlined some important pieces of this. This has been, this reconceptualizing and restructuring has been exhilarating and challenging for these teachers. They have, sometimes going through this major of a shift is like going through a swamp and you wonder if you're coming out the other side. They have stuck with it, they have persevered, we have supported them, and I feel like we're at a good, good place. So if you go to the next slide, in summary, what Maureen is saying in this quote that you have access to with a larger text is, the revision to the sixth-grade curriculum, this is what we have right now. We've relined and revamped the curriculum to increase rigor, increase writing opportunities. We had to do this one, was really, really important, to increase the writing opportunities and opportunities for feedback on writing. Once again, if you don't write, you don't get better at writing. Engage students in relevant work and discussion around that work, and then also differentiate learning opportunities right now, a lot through that novel study. So those are the, in a nutshell, those are the changes that they've made. A lot of analysis the year before I came on board, this year was a lot of really working and piloting and determining how we were going to use this to guide next year we should be at full implementation, so.
Well, and before we, before we move on, I, I thought it fitting to ask Mrs. Geibl if, if she would share her thoughts, because last year in this presentation, we had a video excerpt from her sharing her thoughts on where we were at that moment. And, and I will say, the first semester of this year, we wound up doing some, some pretty serious deliberation and sort of chalkboarding, if you will, where we wanted to go, because it, it was time to make some final decisions. And so I, I really appreciate Mrs. Geibl taking the time to do that, and, and really have to thank Dr. Shanahan, both for her work as a consultant and as our Assistant Superintendent, because I can tell you, you know, A, our folks at the middle school absolutely love working with her when she comes in for, for one of those sessions, and, you know, not only is she an expert in the field, but she's willing to roll up her sleeves and say, what do you need to get this done, and, and to offer the type of support that teachers and frankly, principals love to have, so that's fantastic. And the product, I should say, really leaves me with this feeling that we are able to have our cake and eat it too. What, what she went through about trying to figure out the way to incorporate writing grade-level text and reading-level text is not easy to do, and that's why this has, has taken a long time. And, and to do it without a program was one thing, the fact that we added this program of my perspectives is just a huge bonus, because now our teachers who, who have a daunting task in front of them really have a clear blueprint. So it's just fantastic news, and I thank you again. And moving on now to Mr. Crombie.
Thank you, Dr. Griesmer. So we're to continue under the umbrella of Priority One, Learning and Achievement, and the initiative is extending the learning beyond the four walls of the classroom. The table represent, the table up on the screen there represents all of the guest speakers that enrich the lives of our students this year at Amherst Middle School. Tonight, we are going to highlight two of our annuals, but we have added a twist to those two annuals, and in addition, highlight the new experiences. So once again, a team of professionals led by Mr. Mansfield, one of our TAs in the middle school, did a wonderful job with this year's Ball for Bucks campaign, and I am proud to say on his behalf, as well as his team, that we have raised over, raised over one-hundred-thousand dollars over the last five years, an amazing accomplishment. The, the added twist to this year's fundraising campaign was that our math department felt compelled to get involved, based on the timing of this year's Ball for Bucks campaign. It was in March, it kicked off, and as you know, Pi Day, March fourteenth, is in March. And our math teachers did a great job creating a penny-day, Pi Day pennywork amongst all of our students, and here is a video explaining it all. See, it didn't do it. My apologies, because, there we go.
The school are also celebrating the day with a dessert that shares its name with. They use this year's Pi Day as a way to kickstart fundraising for next month's Ball for Bucks campaign. News four is Marley Tuskes shows us more. Marley? Yeah, Chrissy, that's right. A pie to the face might not sound too nice, but the students at Amherst Middle School had some pretty good intentions, raising more than seventeen-hundred dollars and getting rewarded by either teachers. Each year organizers have found different ways to fundraise for the Ball for Bucks cause, and this year, the school's math department came up with an idea incorporating some calculations. Students competed against each other with the goal to pie different teachers in the face in honor of today's holiday. And although it can get messy, school officials say it's a no-brainer to participate.
We have just all had such an impact with someone having cancer in their lives, and I think that is just really, we can be coming together as a family and we just try to help each other out, and I think when someone does something to, to give back, we try to, we kind of just jump on board and help each other out.
Was asked by the kids, and I'll do anything for the kids in order to, you know, make a point, and teach a life lesson, that it's always good to give back to our community of those in need, so.
Each student who brought in a donation entered in the raffle to hi a teacher who volunteered. Again, the one-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-eight dollars the students raised will go toward the school's Ball for Bucks event that's set to happen on April eleventh. Marley Tuskes, news four. National Pi Day is a day...
Why is the keyboard in here? Difficulties here regarding the keyboard here, so our apologies.
Well, as Mr. Schneil helps us out with that, it looks like he's done so rather quickly. Thank you. But I'll just say, we, we had, we had our event, if you were able to attend, you know how special it was. If not, maybe you saw some video footage or photographs of it, but we did make the big reveal there that we eclipsed the hundred-thousand-dollar mark and we had some wonderful participation, which is, which is absolutely fantastic. Another annual assembly or event that we hold has to do with our year-long partnership experience, which you heard me talk to you about each year we've done it, and I, I briefed you on, on Danceability, but it's certainly worth mentioning in this venue, relative to our goals and the strategic plan, that, that this, this year's year-long partnership has come together with a nice twist. You know, the goal is for us to adopt an organization for the year and provide meaningful learning opportunities for our students, to see how helping your community can have tangible effects over time. And one of the, the neat things that we, we talked about in the beginning of the year as a possibility was to help Danceability in a very, a very concrete way relative to space. So, so Danceability, if you recall, is a dance studio for adults and children with special needs, and they do a wonderful job, and like most dance studios, hold an annual, really big recital. And like, like my daughter's dance studio, they typically get so big that you have to have several shows. So what has come to fruition, thanks to many people's efforts in including our district office and Board of Education, frankly, with their support for allowing this usage of space to take place, we are proud to be helping to host Danceabilities' annual recital, which as you can tell, is Saturday. And their dress rehearsals began tonight, everybody was here, their official photographers were here, the lighting crew was here, and in addition to the space, the learning opportunity comes in in that all of the school adults and students were given the opportunity to help volunteer in some way, shape, or form that day. And I was in the cafeteria each day at lunch, and students were coming up and signing up for things, and then they had to bring in a permission slip. And now we have most of our groups set, ready to volunteer for Saturday, but we have door ushers and greeters and prop makers and stage crew students all set up, and, and adults, frankly, to help us. We're going to be selling mementos for the recital. If you know anything about recitals, usually there are, are small tokens with either the theme or the colors of the studio at play, and we'll be doing that. So in, in the years that we've done this, we've not yet had this sort of an extra piece, so we thought it would be, be worth mentioning, and, and I think if you have time by yourself or with your family to come see this dance recital, I am told every year it is, it is quite unbelievable, and it is, it is emceed, if that's the term, by a, a local personality, and I believe there are, there's a different one set up for each, each show, and it should just be a lot of fun.
And I may add, the showtimes are eleven, three, and five o'clock, etc., if interested, please join us. Moving on with something new. Our seventh-grade science team, made up of Mrs. Suzie and Mrs. Claxton, did a fantastic job in securing Praxair's STEAM team to join our entire seventh-grade class a while back, and the objective of the STEAM team is to, I would say... And the objective of the STEAM team is to, I would say, shatter stereotypes that if you're a science person, you work for a science company. Because not only did they bring cool, as you can see in the pictures to the right, some dry ice, our kids tinkered with dry ice and other scientific inquiries, which is fantastic, as a former science teacher, I can attest to that. But what I really loved about it is that it spoke to the students who have an affinity for the arts or writing, because then not only did they bring their engineers, they brought their design team as well as their communications team. So those individuals were able to speak to their love of the arts as a middle school child and how it erupted and landed themselves in a company like Praxair, which was fantastic for me to see as a science teacher, to be honest with you. I loved it.
Adding to our list of guest speakers and that, that, that sort of perception of where you go or what field you have based on your interest in school, we had a great visit from three active-duty military photojournalists right around Veterans Day. And they came to an ELA class, seventh grade English, I should say. And they shared their, their love of photography and writing and how their passion, much like Mr. Crombie was saying, the link to Praxair, coupled with an interest in joining the military of course, had, has enabled them to see the world and write about it and take pictures in ways they never thought possible. So I just, I thought that was an interesting sort of day for our students to hear something you might not always hear in, in, in veterans or active-duty folks talking about their career. Because it's certainly a niche market within the many things you can do in, in serving in our military. So, so that was, that was a nice plus on our list of guest speakers.
So continuing in the realm of guest speakers, through collaborative efforts with Mrs. Maida, Mr. Piles, and Mr. Schmidly, who worked together to create a week of enrichment activities focused on aviation as well as highlight other several curricular topics, they were able to secure the gentleman seated there on the left-hand side, Mr. Andy Hayes, who was a, a local high school graduate. I believe it was Berger, he mentioned he graduated many, many moons ago, he said. And he left high school with a, I believe it was an aviation certificate, like a technician certificate, if I, if I recall correctly. And, you know, then he went into the field and he worked from the ground up, pun intended by the way, and grew two companies that he now owns locally. And if you see a, a plane on the tarmac that may need a repair, not just here in Buffalo, but across the nation, it's his company that actually fixes those planes to make sure that we all travel safely from, from point A to point B, which was fantastic. And I, I want to highlight that Mr. Hayes, in his presentation, stressed the need for individuals to take on this field, especially our young ladies, which I thought was very empowering for, for our young, for our young Tigers. And they, they continued throughout the week, as I mentioned earlier, the picture on the right is two of our young ladies taking apart a turbine, right? Learning what makes a plane move, thrust, the drag, the weight, gravity, et cetera. And having sidebar conversations with our students throughout the week, I was, I was able to collect some anecdotal evidence that, you know, they were beaming, they were, they were inspired by what their teachers have brought to them to, you know, like I said, learn outside of the four walls of the classroom.
And continuing out with this theme and this task, we had two additional guest speakers join us on our World Down Syndrome Day celebration, which we've done at, at Amherst Middle School for the past few, few years. And it's always a, a great day for me frankly, to see all the blue and yellow around the building, if you're trying to dress in support, and there are typically activities, et cetera, affiliated with this celebration. But, but adding to the guest speaker richness in, in our school this year, we were joined by Mr. Jared Smith and Ms. Angelique Everett, both of whom have Down Syndrome. And they spoke with Mrs. Goldman's class. And Jared is the cousin of one of our students, and he spoke about his education and his career and, and what he does. And then Ms. Everett did, followed suit, but what was interesting about, about what she does is, is she is a published author. And she brought a book she's had published on bullying, and it's a children's story, and she read it to our class and left us an autographed copy, which was pretty special.
All right. So now we transition from guest speakers to authentic learning experiences.
Outside.
Outside of the classroom, absolutely. So although we've, we have our old faithful listed up there, DC, Cleveland, and Open Savers Practice, today we're going to highlight some of our new or returning trips. So our middle school studio and art class took, took part in a junior docent journey which started in, really in September. And with the great work of their teacher, Mrs. Klein, as, as well as retired our teacher, Mrs. Julia, who happened to find herself interwoven in, in this learning experience with our students. The students start out on a Saturday field trip in September where they took a, an art tour, public art that you may sign in and around the city. And from what I come to learn, they didn't walk, they took a, a street art tour utilizing the open-air nickel city buses with the bikes and things of that nature, tour bus, excuse me. And they met the artist at one of the murals, as you see there, his name was Casey Millibrand, met him, met them at his famous Green from Buffalo mural and described the process. Picture on the left is our students at the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library. And this was put together by one of our parents, Mrs. Stanton, arranged this for, for this group to stop by the library in, in their travels. And in doing so, the librarian, Amy Finger, pictured there in the, the photo to the left, spoke about World War II era posters, which really intrigued our students. In addition to that, Mrs. Stanton discussed going back to the art, real world, excuse me, real world art application process where she, she shared with our students how her role in the artist department, in the graphic artist department, really helped figure out how to set up the presentations in, in a detailed way for our students to enjoy. So picture down the left are our students at the Darwin Opera House in the city of Buffalo. And I'm going to let Sean Patrick and Johnny Dooley just take the show.
The Darwin Award Junior Docent Program has been a great experience teaching us how to create an online art project, to create our own t-shirts.
We usually get to make one in the rooms, like I'm in the Burser's office in the Darwin Opera House.
Yeah.
We actually even got to see the Darwin Opera House, which is very rare, which I thought was very cool.
You also get to, like, on the same field trip where we saw the house, we got to see the neighborhood and see the different types of architecture that were there. We also got to build some of our own architecture.
I remember on the hall, the field trip, when we went to the Darwin Opera House, when we saw the other houses, we saw the houses with like the stones, which were in like Burser's ones that they're like cow stuff. And they had like the little tiny garages for the carriages to go through.
Yeah, so it's a historic way to learn about Buffalo.
Very good.
From the mind of a middle school student, fantastic. And on behalf of Amherst Middle School, Dr. Griesmer and I want to formally thank these three organizations that, that helped make trips like this, these experiences like this for our students happen. Our middle school, high school, PTSA, as well as our Boozer Club, and in addition to all of those, to our Alumni Foundation. All of these experiences for our students may not have happened if you didn't have the support, but thank you.
Transitioning to student life and the initiative of student-teacher relationships, we had a task to strive to incorporate an enhanced mental health curriculum or program that can be offered to all students. And I am very pleased to say that we have one that certainly touches a very important part of mental health curriculum. And I believe you got an update from Mrs. Terry and Mr. Bellisle at one of the most recent board meetings, but I think it's important for me to just mention it again tied to this task because we, after a lot of work and a lot of research, and a ton of credit goes to Mrs. Julie Terry for this, and the rest of our people personnel, staff in the building and the district, we were able to settle on what I believe to be a, a very sound and very appropriate suicide prevention program. Obviously Hazelton is, is the, the group that puts this out and it's called Lifeline's Prevention. And you may have received one of my emails as a parent telling you that this was forthcoming. If you didn't, I sent an email to parents telling them that this was forthcoming. And then there was, it was also an open invitation to attend a parent information night, which was held last week. And it was fantastic and Dr. Silas McCollum helped us with this. And it really takes parents, as we should, through the steps of this program. Because as we all know, this is a very heavy topic for anyone, let alone middle school children, but, but it is absolutely necessary. And while it's tough to think about it, it's reassuring to know that there are fine folks around the country and the world working to come up with something that's evidence-based and grade-level appropriate, and we've got it. So, you know, we're, we're fortunate in that regard for certain. And just to review what I think Mrs. Terry reviewed with you already, how the way this will break down is it's, it's based on 40-minute sessions spread throughout the year with, with activities to be done in school, conversation starters for home, and that it's really meant to be a community that can respond. That I have tools to help myself, I have tools to help my friend, my teachers have tools to help someone, my family has tools to help someone. It's really meant to be a community effort. But we offer health in sixth and eighth grade, and we will run the program in its entirety in those two years with the four sessions as prescribed, co-talk, and this is a perfect combination in my mind, by a counselor and a health teacher. And we will do it in health class. As we looked at this, we, we pretty quickly said we'd rather not go a whole year in seventh grade with no touchpoints to this toolbox, right? For these skills for our, our children to, to learn and grasp. So we have modified it in seventh grade to come in for two sessions that would be led by the counselor who will push into one of our four area classes. So that is, that is good to see that we figured out a way to have it across all three grade levels. And actually, in, in the similar sense, we didn't want the rest of this school year to go by without getting it started. So it actually started this week in sixth grade and we will do the four sessions, and we're going to do two in eighth before the school year is over. So that, that is a, a huge step forward. And again, thank you to everyone who put that together. Finally, tonight, we'll talk about priority three, Amherst Pride, and the initiative of, of employee wellness. We, we had a task to try to incorporate mindfulness opportunities for staff. You may have heard of the mindfulness movement in education, and it's, it's very popular for teachers to use with their students. It has to do with really, you know, calming the mind, settling the body before we start that new instruction so we're ready to go. Well, not surprisingly, the same research is being conducted for adults and, and teachers, you know, as a group. And, and, and it's showing itself to be pretty beneficial in that wellness sense. We are fortunate in that we have a teacher, you've, I've written to you about her before in my newsletter to you, and that is Mrs. Kelly Murphy, who is very well-read and studied in the world of mindfulness and, and education. She has incorporated that with her students over the past few years and availed herself to help our teachers figure out ways to incorporate it if they're interested. Well, she went one step further thanks to our subcommittee and thanks to her generosity frankly, and said, you know, I'd be willing to run a morning session for any teachers who want to come by for that, kind of before the day starts kickoff. And I'm very happy to say that for the past few months, every Thursday before the workday starts, teachers can, and staff frankly, can, can join Mrs. Murphy in her room for about 10 minutes or so to, to practice mindfulness techniques. And, and one of the days that I went in, the group was fine with me taking pictures and so you can see them sitting there quietly. Mrs. Murphy plays an audio tape that sort of narrows your way through it. And, and I've done it myself, it's fantastic, and when it's done, you are, you are ready for the day. And to close us out, I, I found it fitting to include this quote, and I will read it because Laura McEnany is part of the group and she is soon to retire, so it is a fitting way to close the presentation. Mindfulness on Thursday mornings has become an activity that has impacted both my work and personal life in a very positive way. I am so thankful for Kelly's support and guidance with helping us learn this extremely beneficial lifelong skill and truly look forward to this every week. And with that, we mindfully close the presentation and are certainly open for any questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that thorough review of this year's teaching initiatives in the middle school. Certainly a lot of positive things to be proud of and a lot of things to set the stage for more good work to come next year. Thank you. That is it for Superintendent DeBort.
All right. We will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion for new business items, F1, A through L, 2, A through E, and 3F.
We have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, F1, A through L, 2, A through E, and 3F, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries, 7-0. I'd just like to point out, tonight we have appointed a new team member in Mr. Jeffrey Wheaton, who's going to be replacing Dr. Ellie. I will just say, Mr. Wheaton would have liked to be here tonight, but he has obligations in his other district and has said he's going to join us at a June board meeting to introduce himself and his family to us. So just so you guys are aware. Mrs. Costello, do we have any follow-up action items?
No.
Great. And we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
Our motion convenes to executive session to discuss the appointment of a particular person.
Have a second? That's reviewable? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.